Welcome to Falmouth. If you're a visitor, this is where Surf and Son meet for fun. If you're a resident, this is where you'll find the businesses and the resources necessary to fill all of your needs. If you're a business person, this can be your home. Join with other men and women who work together to make this a sustainable economy year-round. Welcome to Falmouth Cape Cod.
Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Tonight is Monday, September the 10th. If you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going this evening, I want to remind folks that there is a 9/11 dedication tomorrow morning at 8:30 at the Falmouth Fire Headquarters. A piece of the Twin Towers will be dedicated here as a permanent memorial to those victims that tragically lost their lives on 9/11. Thank you. The next, the first item up on tonight's agenda is to discuss and vote the tax earmarks from the meals tax, whether or not this board wants to consider pledging more than the 25% that is currently pledged right now from the meals tax that would go towards capital. Now, I know we had this discussion in the spring. We never made any decisions, and there are a couple of ways that we could go. One would be to potentially file a home rule petition to the state legislature that would allow us to do this and potentially would have to get town council to see whether it would pass the muster. But I know in other towns and communities, the rooms tax is earmarked, and there is a home rule petition which doesn't allow the money to be used for anything except what the home rule petition states. My personal opinion is that, you know, we can use any and all dollars we have in this community but for the operating budget, but the more we take in sometimes, the more we gobble up. So if we come up with a firm plan or at least a policy from the board that we can discuss this evening where this money will go, at least we know that it'll go towards that, at least while this board stays together. Doing some kind of home rule petition would be targeted for the Springtown meeting, but right now to bridge the gap, and there is a gap, we all know, it's considerable because that gap failed at the ballot last spring. We were able to make a contribution to the capital stabilization fund out of the budget, and we're hoping that we have some free cash as we move into Falltown meeting to be able to fund some capital items. But this is part of the piece of the puzzle. I surely don't want to preempt the capital advisory committee, but if we can give them more tools as we move down the road here, it would be best served. We might not be able to solve our capital issue with one home run issue. I mean, it would be great to say that we're going to get that funded via an override, but I think realism is here that that didn't happen last spring, and that was only a small override. So we have to be creative in government, figure a way that we can have the funds to continue to operate this community, as well as be able to sustain our capital, meaning that that infrastructure that we have, whether it be roads, whether it be our equipment, whether it be our vehicles, things like that, that we have continued to put off that maintenance. So this might be a small step in moving forward on that. I'm going to let Julian explain to the board a little bit about how much we've raised this past year and what the dollars are, and then we can open it to a discussion via the meal. He's going to explain what we raised via the meals tax. So go right ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll just pass down, I think probably the board members may have a copy of that summary already, but indicating that in the first full year of collection on meals taxes, the town realized just over $697,000 in annual revenue. And, Mr. Chairman, here's one other piece that goes back to FY12 that I wanted to hand down to members of the board that includes some language about that 25%. And as the board will see, it involves a suggested set aside both at the stabilization fund and the capital, 25% to be set aside for capital expenses as well. The town has enjoyed the benefit of a pretty healthy revenue stream here in meals taxes, and as you noted, Mr. Chairman, this is the appropriate time to discuss our being good stewards of that really found revenue stream. Currently, it's paid into the general fund, but the amount that is not appropriated ultimately falls out to free cash, but stays within the general fund. And what we're talking about short of a home rule petition would be a written policy adopted by the board for discussion also with the finance committee and ultimately town meeting annually on earmarking or setting aside these meals tax revenues. And as you indicated, I feel very strongly that they should be considered for a set aside for capital spending purposes. This board knows better than anyone the challenges we have had in meeting capital spending needs. Free cash does not get the job done fully. We continue to fall behind. We were unfortunately fell short by several hundred votes in the one-time debt exclusion to allow us to add $800,000 to our capital funding for FY13. And this, I think, would make a strong statement, particularly going into the deliberations by the committee that you have announced and is being appointed, Mr. Chairman, to look at capital spending and, in my opinion, sends out a strong message to taxpayers about our willingness to be good stewards over these funds. Again, the written policy would not have the permanent force of law, of course, and would be able to be considered annually by this board, finance committee and town meeting, but makes a strong statement as to your potential commitment for setting it aside for capital needs. Couple other reminders, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. When the analysis was conducted last year by the capital review put in motion by then Finance Chairman Gary Anderson, you'll recall that they identified approximately $3 million in needs annually for capital spending, and the town has fallen well behind that. We are hoping that with this board, finance committee and ultimately town meeting support, we can affect some additional catch-up here in the November town meeting, but obviously we will not have the resources to do anything akin to $3 million. But we want to continue to decrease that gap. Otherwise, it's going to ever widen and make our challenges that much more significant. So these documents give you some of the background information. We are guardedly optimistic that as long as the economy continues to recover, albeit modestly, that these revenues are likely to be reasonably stable and expanding at least at a modest rate, which will allow us to more responsibly budget for capital needs going forward, to be supplemented in whatever ways the committee might determine, Mr. Chairman. And Heather and I would be happy to answer questions or follow up in whatever manner you might prefer. I will note that my suggestion, if the board is comfortable, is that if you are willing to consider some type of written policy, Heather and I would be happy to come back to you with a draft policy for your consideration at a near-term meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll open it up to discussion to the board.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm not clear. We, based on this, and I recall that, we decided that there would be a minimum of 25 allocated to stabilization and 25 to capital. So now we're looking at the funds that are available to us. And what I wasn't clear about was the, is it an option or a requirement that we have a home rule petition?
That, and that may disagree a little bit, the town manager and Heather and I a little bit on this, in the fact because the difference between a policy, a policy can be changed, difference between a home rule petition, a home rule petition is that it's etched in stone, and it can be changed. You just have to go back to town meeting and then go back to the legislature. I have heard a lot of discussion in the last two years in regard to the meals tax money with many departments, many contracts up for that we have the meals tax money. It's thrown around out there, well, we have the meals tax money. Well, I mean, 50% of it is already quote-unquote spoken for, and this board has continued to honor that. I'm just saying that it is new money, that it would be best served that we just don't let it, for lack of a better reason, a better expression, get thrown in the pit and get dissolved and get eaten up by just the actual operations in this community. We still have proposition two and a half, which allows us to increase our tax levy by two and a half percent. We also have new growth, which allows us to add additional to the two and a half percent. To me, to the stabilization in the capital in this town, which we've had problems funding, it makes sense to try to come up with an idea and an ideal of how we're going to actually put this aside.
See, I would be more inclined to think about a policy rather than a home rule petition because the economy still isn't stabilized at a national level or even at a state level. And it would seem that if we, that we had 50%, that we should take a look at each year, perhaps, and determine where's the best allocation for that. And remember, if it goes to the operating budget, then it becomes non-recurring, I mean, it's non-recurring revenue because even though it, there is a recurring of the, a recurrence, rather, of the meals tax, there's not a recurring of putting that into the operating budget every year. So you get into that problem of putting money in the operating budget and then not having it there the following year because it has to be, you know, re-appropriated. But I don't know.
I wholeheartedly agree with you, and it's an open discussion. It comes down to whether you want to put your money into a passport savings account or whether you want to put it into a CD. A CD typically you can't touch for other reasons. And I'm talking about a home rule petition. That's a discussion we can, we can talk about as we come down the bike, and of course, that would have to be agreed to by town meeting. And it might even be a two-thirds majority vote, I'm not sure.
Well, I would not be in favor of that.
Okay.
Because to undo it, you have to go back to the legislature. And they might say, don't you, people know what you're doing? I mean, when you, you put it in there thinking you want it to stay there for whatever reason, not use it. I think we ought to have it available, but review it each year and look at what our needs are, and do we have, do we have a further need for capital? Do we have a further need for stabilization, or do we have other needs that we could use it for? Do we just let it sit there for another year? I mean, I, I don't know.
Right.
I just don't like to get tied into that kind of revenue and not be able to touch it without getting legislative approval. That's my, those are my thoughts.
And, you know, I can see your point, but I also understand the ideas and the ideal of government. And, you know, when things get tough, we look for other sources. We just saw recently with our, you know, our shelters program, that over the course of a period of years, we virtually gutted the program. We were taking in $80,000 in fees and permits, and we were spending $10,000 in propagation. So, I mean, it went from here to there. It was an easy thing until someone saw it that, that we were, you know, spending it. This provides some discipline. I'm just putting the kinds of things, we need two different, two different issues here. One would, pardon me, there's three. Number one is, do we want to make the commitment as a board this year to at least take that additional 50% and put it towards the capital stabilization? That's one decision. The other decision is, would we want to do an ongoing policy? That would be a choice between a policy and a stabilization, a home rule petition. So there's really three different choices. One would be now, the other ones would be in the Springtown meeting.
Well, the other thing is, is over the last two or three years, we spent down our reserves, and we got into a position where we had very little in the amount of reserves, and even our auditor said, you need to do better than this. You need to get your reserves back up to a certain level. And I'm not sure where they are right now at this point in terms of what is expected for us to have. So I think we need to look at all of this. We need to look at our needs, our capital needs. We need to look at where our reserves are. Obviously, it's a considerable amount of money, but.
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify something?
Sure.
Isn't there both a stabilization fund and a capital stabilization fund?
That's correct.
And this is just capital expenses, which could be those-year capital expenses. That is not necessarily the savings account for capital projects. There's the stabilization fund, which is open to anything we need almost as a reserve account. There's the capital stabilization fund, which isn't mentioned in our policy. And then there's capital expenses that come up on a yearly basis.
Right. And I, and I think a good way to describe that, Doug, is we didn't have a capital stabilization fund, so we might even, even need to tweak this.
Right.
That would be up to the board.
Yeah.
Very good point.
For, for FY, oh, here's a copy for everybody. For FY13, we have three stabilization funds. We have $440,000 in the general stabilization, $520,000 in the capital projects, and $1,373 plus in the health, health insurance stabilization, which is there in the event, and we know that health insurance costs will rise next year, and that is there to protect the town in terms of any increases in health insurance, so.
Right.
So this is what we added this year, was it not? So these numbers may actually be higher than this, I think?
No.
This is what we approved.
This is what was approved, yeah.
These are the current totals.
For FY13.
Oh, okay.
But what, I think what he's asking is, is this represent the entire fund, the stabilization fund? I think we have a lot more than $440,000 in the entire stabilization fund.
Right. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
If we don't, we're all in real trouble.
That's what was appropriated this time.
Right.
Right. This is one page that you noticed that says two of five. This is actually from the budget policy statement that the board is required to issue annually a further charter. When we first, and for the history, because there are a few members of the board who weren't on the board when we first started working on, on this particular issue. When we first passed the meals tax, we agreed as a board at the time, and we, we basically, it's not cast in stone, obviously, but it's cast in ink here, where we agreed and we said, okay, we're not going to use the local options taxes, the meals tax, or although the hotel room tax never passed, but we said we weren't going to use that revenue as a source for the annual budget. We were going to set it aside. And at the time, we allocated the 25% and the 25%, leaving the 50% open to be allocated in some other fashion. So when we talk about policies, it's already here. We, we do have to redevelop our policy in the next few weeks or months for the, for this year's budget policy. And I think that we would probably incorporate this in there as we have in years past. I agree with Ms. Flynn that I'm not inclined to go for a home rule petition. I think it's perhaps a little limiting. I think as long as the board annually discusses this process and we agree that we try to stay true to what we originally intended here, which was to try to keep this source of revenue outside of the annual budget so that we could depend upon it for things like capital and stabilization, I'm not too concerned that that's going to be abused going forward. I think as long as we continue to do this, it'll set a precedent which will be difficult for future boards to, to ignore. And then I guess it's just a matter of asking ourselves what we're going to find more important over the next year is stabilization or capital, or are they equally important? How are we going to allocate that, that funding piece by piece there, so?
And again.
Go ahead, Doug.
The 2011, 2012 is money that's all passed. What we didn't move into these funds went into certified free cash, and we don't control that anymore, and that's certified free cash. What we're talking about really now is what are we doing to fiscal, the present year, fiscal year 2013, in which we could allocate future funds somewhere beyond these two 25%? And then in the future, as Brett's saying, for next year, we need to come up with a policy. But we could right now say, there's another 50% that we know is going to come in. Do we want to put that, for instance, in the capital stabilization fund? That we fund what we've asked the town to fund by saying, okay, we're not going to let that be operating budget. We're not going to let that be each department using up that money. We're going to say, we really need to put something in the savings account aside for our capital needs.
And as I said to you, there's three decisions, and I think you're right on in the first decision. Roughly, if I'm going to ask Julian, I think we have an additional $250,000 that's unspoken for this year.
Approximately, you know.
So that's really what we're talking about right now. As I said, the other issues we can talk about as we move forward.
Well, in looking at this, we, the 25% that would go to capital is, what, a million something out of this? 697?
No, no. 174.
I mean, I don't mean a million. Right, 174. So I'm thinking that, considering that the previous capital advisory committee was recommending $3 million over a three-year period, was it?
Annually.
Or over annually, that we allocate, well, remember, we used to allocate $7 million annually for capital. So asking for $3 million is like less than half of that. So we might want to consider, with remaining 50%, really have them take a look at the capital needs, which we haven't really met from their proposals to us last time, that we might name want to, even this year, consider using some of that money to meet the capital needs that have been unmet for years.
I think that's what we're talking about here, Pat. What we're talking about is making a contribution.
Right.
To the capital stabilization fund at the Falltown meeting.
Okay.
Based off of what we have in excess of this, which is roughly $250,000 or thereabouts.
That's where the 250.
Right. It's not, you've already got the, the 175 roughly there, thereabouts.
Right, okay.
Do you follow?
I do.
Okay.
And I would, I would support that. I would give that great and serious consideration, considering the tremendous needs we've had over the last four or five years and have been unable to address. And when we did have a proposal to address at the ballot, it didn't even pass the ballot, so.
Right. And I think it's going to show that the public, that is, many folks in the finance committee have said that we have some skin in the game. We're not just letting the money go by the wayside. We're making contributions. We're putting money aside for our rainy day as we move forward. David, you have any?
First, I do agree with you, Kevin, on your original comments about, you know, the more money you have, the more you gobble up and use for other things. I, and I know they were asking the FinCom, somewhere in the area of $3 million annually to put into this. The other 50% right now that comes in over and above this, excuse me, goes where? Does it go right into the, the other 50% of the?
In the general fund. Default to the free cash if it's not appropriate.
Would it ever be a decision, you know, can we bring up the, do we ever want to increase this from 25% on each of these?
I think that's, that would be the second question, as Brent says, as we come up with our budget statement.
Okay.
You know, in the next month or so after we get to our meeting. We're trying to say is, right now, before anyone else puts a grab on this one.
Right.
Do we want to commit the other 50% for this year?
Okay. Well, I.
I think we should.
I agree. Yeah.
I mean.
Very much in favor of that.
So what we would say is that we'd look for a motion that for this year, the additional 50%, which is roughly $250,000, of the town manager will actually confirm that number to us at some point. We'll be looking for a motion that they would set aside that to the capital stabilization fund. So I'll look, for someone to make this.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Okay. But these are all projected number. I mean, we can't put a number in there because we're talking about a percentage on the meals tax, and we don't know what's coming in fiscal year 2013.
Is, may we bring you a draft policy on that, that the board could consider?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, a question to you right now. Is this money from '12 spent? The 697,000?
No.
That's what we're saying. I think tonight, we want to make sure.
A portion of it's appropriated for FY13.
Pardon me? A portion of it was.
A portion of it is appropriated.
But you say that roughly 250,000 is not.
Some of it is yet unappropriated, yes.
So I don't know if many folks have seen, but when we go to town meeting, a lot of people want to look for a funding source. We take the funding source off the table, this funding source is no longer at town meeting. That's what I'm trying to say to the board. We have an opportunity to reserve this for the capital stabilization fund tonight versus put it on the table for something at town meeting that, that's looking for a funding source.
I wholeheartedly support not having the meals tax increase be available for those kind of earmarks, but for the capital stabilization fund.
And remember, too, that the, that the money has already been, that has been looked at and approved by the capital advisory committee was a result of department heads presenting their needs to the committee. So this isn't, this isn't something that the need has yet to be presented. The needs have already been presented, and they've already been looked at by the.
Well, not only that, Pat, but remember, we're going to have to have a voter town meeting to take money out of that account.
That's true.
So it's got to come out of that capital stabilization fund based on the town meeting vote. So there are some checks and balances here. The one check is that we want to make sure that we continue to grow that. Go ahead, Heather.
I just want to comment that the capital needs and what we expect to see this fall are well in excess of the $250,000, in excess of the 520 plus 250,000. So you may just want to see from us something a little different than directing it this fall into capital stabilization. We may want to direct it right into the capital plan this year, so you don't have an in and out and an in and out from, from a budgetary standpoint.
That's a good point.
I, I don't know if it makes sense to do that. So I just want to mention that for, for you to contemplate when the policy comes in, that it would, the effect is exactly the same. And the effect is critically important because what it does is in one fiscal year, it raises your capital as part of your operating budget from the 520 plus the 250 to over $700,000 that you would have available as part of your base budget moving into fiscal 14. So in fiscal 14, you would have built into your budget over $700,000 for the next fiscal year.
Right. And in candor, that number should be larger in the years to come because we'll be looking at three-quarters of the meals tax, not just 50% of the meals tax, what we're talking about tonight.
So I just thought we wanted, I wanted to share with you. So we'll, we'll have to talk about the account and have council make sure we don't have too many moves.
I think certainly the policy that the board's looking for is that this 50% goes to capital projects.
Right.
Whether it's the capital stabilization or fiscal 13, capital projects. But we'll get that from you guys.
We'll be happy to bring you language that the board could consider to that end.
So, so my question is this. We have a motion on the table. I don't know if we got a second.
A second.
Motion is second, so that's for discussion. This year, right now, we're going to look to the town manager and do, do we want to reserve those funds for capital stabilization fund, the additional 50%? That's what the motion is. And then you come back to us with what the number actually was.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
You have additional money in there that if you want to spend that, you could spend that out, but not, not this money. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
I want to clarify what the motion is, that you're saying that 50% is going to go into the stabilization fund.
Capital stabilization.
I would wait again until we get the town manager's recommendation on the language. I don't think we can vote that because I think Heather's point is, if we put all of it into the stabilization fund, we don't have the freedom to do this fall some of the capital projects we need.
Go ahead.
If you're talking about the other 50% that's not talked about here.
I, I understand that, but I just, that's why I asked the question. Remember, we still have another $500,000 that we could spend some of that money if we wanted this fall besides depositing this money. Again, my fear to the board is that this money is available then as a funding source for articles at town meeting that are not, maybe based off of anything that, you know, our financial plan might be moving forward.
Well, suppose I withdraw my motion and make a new motion that, and the motion would be that the. be that the $250,000 be, be considered for capital expenditures based on a policy that the board will review and vote on at its next meeting. Now, that's too complicated.
All right, Brett, let's try to.
The whole idea is, is to reserve it for the capital expenditures, and not say whether it's stabilization or the capital plan, but for the time being, it will be reserved for capital expenditures until the board votes a specific policy.
Frankly, I think we should put it into the capital stabilization fund. I think whether we spend it this year or next, it's going to be allocated for that purpose. But I think what we want to do is send a message, and this was the whole purpose of the capital stabilization fund anyway, was to say, look, we're going to put it in here. And this was the, this was the sales pitch that we, we did earlier this year with the one-year debt exclusion, which did not pass. But the pitch that we gave with that was that, look, we're going to put money into this savings account, and we're going to reserve it there. And the only way it's going to come out is if town meeting says, we're going to take it out of there and allocate it and spend it for capital purposes. I think if we set this aside and say that we're going to spend it sometime in November for capital expenses, we're sort of bypassing the whole idea of the capital stabilization fund, which, quite frankly, I think it sends the wrong message. We're trying to, if we want to sell to the people of Falmouth, the idea that we may need to do a capital exclusion or a debt exclusion, or even a full override at some point in the near future, in order to address these annual capital expenses, I think we have to be as fiscally responsible and as fiscally conservative about this process as we possibly can be, so that we set the precedent, so that we show people that we're not just spending money willy-nilly, or as quickly as we can get it, but we really do want to set aside money and have this get spent in a very responsible fashion. So I would say, let's, let's keep this allocated or earmarked for the stabilization fund. It'll get spent for capital purposes, but it means now it has to go through that extra check and balance of town meeting, which is exactly what we said this spring anyway.
Or the other option is not to take any action tonight until Julian and Heather come back with the written.
Well, again, I think the policy would be a second issue. The policy would be something moving forward. You follow what I mean? I think we're asking, I gave you three options. One option would be the option tonight of how we're going to reserve the funds we currently have. The other one would be if you wanted to do a policy or, or a home rule petition as we move forward. I have no problem with doing the policy, but I wanted it on the table. Those are separate issues. He's going to write a policy, bring it back to us. I think that would be a separate motion to ask the town manager to write a policy moving forward with the, the meals tax money.
Then, then, then what we want to say tonight is that we, we're going to agree that the $250,000 should be used for capital.
What we want to say tonight, I think, is we want to take that $250,000 this year and appropriate it to the capital stabilization fund. Not that it's going to be used as capital, because it's still out there in limbo. If it's in an actual account, it can't be spent.
Oh, I see, so you want it to be in an account that where it can't be spent for?
It can be spent, but it can't be, only be spent for capital.
For capital.
So are you still withdrawing your motion, or that's where we are?
No, I guess my original motion was to do what you just suggested, that it goes into the capital stabilization fund.
You had a second.
So if we want to use it in November, though, it has to be voted by town meeting.
It would be put into that fund and then voted out.
But it could be done that day. I mean, we could put it in.
Correct, two steps, rather than one step.
We could put in Article III, we could put it in. In Article VI, we could then approve the use of it from the fund where we just put the money in. So that still allows it for use in November.
True.
Then I have no problem with that one, so.
Then I'll keep my motion on the table.
So, you had a second. Any further discussion yet? Okay. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I look now for a motion that we would ask the town manager to come back with a policy in regard to, a written policy? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think a separate policy is necessary. I think it's just necessary for us to update our annual budget statement and make sure that we include that language in there, just as we have in years past.
Okay. Well, we'll look at both of those factors. That sounds fine. Okay. Moving forward. Next up is appoint Selectman's Joint Economics Subcommittee member. There, Melissa Freitag was a representative on the Board of Selectment, as well as Brent Putnam. I've been emailed on many occasions lately from Michael Assow, the chairman of the EDIC, about the vacancy of one of our members, and they're looking for a representative, which, Brent, maybe you could bring people up to speed on who actually is on that, because I wasn't here when it was actually formulated.
The committee, it was the result of a joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, and one of the topics of discussion was the future of the EDIC, and more importantly, the, the whole issue of economic development in Falmouth. And so there was a decision that came out of that meeting that we would have two members of the Planning Board, two members of the EDIC, and two members of the Board of Selectmen. And of course, we've held a number of meetings. Unfortunately, in the last few months, the meetings have switched to more of a mid-afternoon meeting, and I haven't been able to make any of them. But we've been holding regular meetings, discussing various issues, and more importantly, bringing in folks from various industries in Falmouth. We had folks from the hospitality industry, we had folks, I know recently they've met with folks from the Woods Hole scientific institutions, to get a feel for what it is that their issues, their concerns are, what the constraints are for their businesses and their fields, and how it is that we, as a community, can support those efforts to try to build that. Because, of course, everybody talks about bringing business to town, but the easiest thing you do is to grow the businesses that you have, which is why we, we put our initial focus on, you know, what are the major industries in Falmouth, and how is it that we can support those industries and help grow them? So that's been the focus and where we are with that. And like I say, the, the meetings recently have been more of a mid-afternoon, in order, I think, to accommodate some of the, the industries, for example, the medical industries, the hospital, for example, trying to get those folks into the meetings. It was easier during the day than it was during the evening, so.
I was told that the, the meeting times can be flexible, and they will alter the meeting times to accommodate schedules of members of the board. So is anyone else interested in being on that? Go ahead.
How often do they meet? Once a month?
We were meeting once a month, but there have been discussions ongoing about meeting more frequently. Obviously, you know, as this board discussed just a week or so ago about sunsetting the, the capital advisory committee, we, as, as a subcommittee, if you will, have, have talked about the fact that we want to come to an endpoint, you know, we don't want to just continue to meet on and on forever. And so there has been discussion about meeting more frequently than once a month, so that we could accelerate the process.
So are you looking for volunteer?
I'm looking for volunteer. I think it would be inappropriate for me, because I also sit on the EDIC, which has representation, so that's why I didn't volunteer myself. So you'd be interested?
Yeah.
Anyone else interested? So I look for a motion to appoint Pat Lynn as our additional representative on the Selectman's Joint Economic Subcommittee?
So moved.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you for the patience. Next, we're going to do our interviews. We have some, we continue to have vacancies on our committees, and we would encourage everyone to check out the website out there, that as we get applicants, we will continue to interview for vacancies on these committees. Many committees have many vacancies, and we would appreciate volunteerism for folks that could step forward and help us.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add the Cape Cod Commission to the list of vacancies here on this town committee vacancy list.
That's right.
We really need somebody representing Falmouth on the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay, first up tonight, Samara Hava. Is Samara here? This is for an interview for the Bike Ways Committee. I'll put it aside for a few minutes. Next up would be Steve Aubrey. Hi, Steve. If you could come up to the lectern, please. Steven, and Steven is applying for position on the Coastal Ponds Management Committee. We have four open, openings, and we have a term expiring on 6/30/15. How you doing?
Good.
Want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, I'm Steve Aubrey. Been a longtime resident for about 27 years or so here in town. My brother and I had started Woods Hole back in, well, it was Aubrey Consulting back in the day, 1986. Right now, I have my own consulting, environmental consulting firm, where I support science and engineering, taking measurements all around the world, so, from building beaches to measuring deep sea currents to looking at mud in the deep sea.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to some questions, if anyone has any doubt.
Your qualifications could not be more appropriate for this committee. What's drawn you to this committee? Was it Dr. Hampson asking you to join it, or?
George and I go back a lot, a lot of years. And as part of my work in the last five, six years, I've been part of the MEP project, doing a lot of diving, taking a lot of measurements for this project. I'm one of the few in the state that can say they've dove the headwaters from most of the eighty-nine invasions in southeast Mass, from the headwaters all the way out to the bay. So I know what the bottom looks like. I know what it should look like. I've studied under George for a lot of years, and I think I can contribute to the town.
Thank you.
Okay. David? Brett? Brett? Did you have a, did you?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I, I just want to thank Mr. Aubrey for the resume. I always appreciate the additional information, and, and I am familiar with his experience and his professionalism, and I agree with what Doug said. I couldn't pick a better candidate this evening, so thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, it's nice to be able to, to read a resume of someone who has been involved in science and be able to pronounce a lot of the words, so sometimes you can't, I can't do that. I was thinking, I'm not sure if this is too far out a question, but I wondered, since you have done a lot of work for a long time, is, do you think our coast and estuaries are telling, are telling us anything about climate change? And if so, are we responding to these messages?
You know what? I'm not sure I'm qualified for climate change.
That you're the right one to answer?
What we do see happening in our bays, Buzzards Bay in particular this year, was an extensive algae bloom that George and I noticed at first like four years ago. But this year was worse than ever. Something's going on. I'm not sure exactly what the pinpoint is. I'm not the expert there. I'm knowledgeable, but not the expert, so.
Okay. I'd just like to say thank you to George for recruiting you, because I, I know that it was him who probably actually put your application in, or helped, put you in handcuffs bringing you in, because I know how much he wanted you.
I still go to sea quite a bit. I'm heading up to the Arctic here in the next couple of weeks. So there are times that I am at sea for extensive periods of time, and I may miss a meeting or two. But other than that, I'll be honest.
Okay. I'm sure we'd be happy to have you. Do I have a motion? Do we have a term expiring? Well, first of all, we'll put Mr. Aubrey's name into nomination. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Steve Aubrey to a term expiring 6/30/15.
So moved.
Motion? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, George.
Next up is Kim Douglas. Is Kim here? And this is for the Commissions on Disabilities? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Sorry, that was a little late. I think I might have been.
No, we're running a little late. Thank you for coming.
Okay.
All right.
Could I first explain, I mean, the way everything's going here? I have the walker, which is temporary, just getting over stroke. And the mask is because I had an accident and I kissed a cement floor. So I have stitches in my mouth, and it looks kind of, I don't like the way it looks. So that's why all this.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to questions. I'll go to Pat first. Do you want to, maybe you want to tell us a little bit of why you want to be on the Commission of Disability?
I have a lot of medical experience, that's for sure, as far as going through quite a different few, quite a few different things. And I would like to, I would like to help out in Falmouth. I've just been back here for about four years. I was living here back in the seventies, and I left and I came back. So, and I do like Falmouth. I've always, you know, been, been very fond of this town. I like to help out in any way I can. And since I'm going through what I'm going through, then that would be a good place for me to be able to voice my opinion.
Okay. Pat?
I'm going to ask you if you've been to any of the Disability Committee meetings at all, and that, and my purpose in asking is really to ask you if you think that they are doing a good job, or if there are things that you think they could do that maybe they haven't thought of yet.
Okay. Unfortunately, in all honesty, I would have to say that I haven't been to those meetings yet. I have had, like, I also go to a sight loss meeting, and Jane Perry came to that meeting to speak, but I haven't really seen any of the disability meetings or been to any, so I really couldn't speak on that.
Okay.
Okay. Brent?
I have no questions.
David?
Actually, I just want to thank you for your application and your willingness to serve the town. I know there's a great need, especially on this committee, and I just want to say thank you very much, and I appreciate your application.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll steal a line from, I think, Brent earlier, as to, the commission is non-regulatory, so again, is this one, that this is an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen? How do you feel about, or how would you respond to the notion that there may be recommendations that the commission makes, that the board's going to have to say, well, we're going to go a different way?
I believe, you know, after, it would, ought to depend quite a bit on what had, you know, transpired, and just seeing how that the two sides could work things out.
Okay. Okay. All right. This, we had a resignation, Ernest Mayberry, and his term expired on 6/30/12, so I imagine this is a three-year term, which would expire on 6/30/15. Do I have a motion at all?
I'll make a motion to place the name and nomination.
A motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. A call for a motion to appoint Kim Douglas to a term expiring on 6/30/15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck. Thank you very much for your volunteer.
Thank you.
Okay. Susan Ripley. Now, this is for the Council on Aging. We do have two positions for the Council on Aging, one on, that would expire on 6/30/13, and one that would expire on 6/30/15. Hi, Susan, how you doing?
Hi, good.
Good. Want to explain a little bit why you want to be on the Council on Aging? And for those who don't know, you explain a little bit about who you are.
Sure, I will. I'm the town treasurer here at the Town of Falmouth, was appointed back here in June by Julianne Susso and then approved through the Selectment, so thank you. Why I'm really here is, in part of my careers before I came to the Cape, I worked for a PNC bank. And in doing that, I was in human resources and in health benefits. It's always been a love. I enjoyed it. I liked explaining it, helping those that have had issues with explanation of benefits, helping people that have had cancer and different types of diseases. Working at the Town of Yarmouth, that was part of the Treasurer's position. Here, which then there's no conflict of interest, as I'm looking at this position, that's not part of what the Treasurer does here because we do have Personnel Director. Part of what I did this summer is went through the SHINE program and just was recently certified as a SHINE counselor. So, what that allowed me to do, starting here October 15th through December 7th, is actually for all of, and when they say elders, there's 60-plus here on the Cape, where we'll go through Medicare and prescription drug programs through Council on Aging and be able to instruct them where they might have better plans and ways to fit. For instance, coming up here real soon is prescription plans, they will be changing. So, we've been trained in that area. We have monthly meetings and it's something that interests me and I feel I can help, you know, the town employees. I'll also be working out of Mashpee at this point in time.
Okay. Great. I'll open it up to some questions. Brent, do you want to start first?
Actually, I have a question. If you forgive my ignorance, you mentioned SHINE counselor. Could you explain a little bit more about what that is?
Sure, I'd be glad to. That's actually serving, well, what SHINE stands for is Serving Health Insurance Needs of Elders. And that's a program here in the state of Massachusetts, sometimes in other states like Pennsylvania where I originate from. It's called CHIP. And it's basically a program that looks at Medicare, Medicaid, prescription drug programs. It'll look at food stamps and it's really just a wide program to help individuals when they're reaching that age, 65-plus or coming to that point.
Thank you.
Okay. David?
I just want to say, Susan, thank you very much for your interest in this. I know there's a big need and I don't have any questions for you, but thank you very much.
Doug?
Just to reiterate the appreciation first to be Treasurer and then to take on this duty as well. Town's blessed to have people like you.
Well, I think it makes a great connection. I think your past experience certainly lends itself extremely well to working with the people who actually use the senior center. I mean, obviously, they are seniors, but they can be young seniors as well. And I think the other piece to that, too, is we know there are employees here in the town who take care of elderly parents. And I think having someone even right here in Town Hall who has that SHINE counselor background can be very helpful sometime if just an employee asks a question about how to deal with, with an elderly parent or relative related to Medicare or something like that. It's nice to have someone here who can do that.
It really is.
So, I think you're, I think you're a great fit for the Council on Aging, clearly.
Okay.
So, I would move to, oh, what?
No, no, we have two, we have two interviews and then we have two different.
Oh, that's right. Sorry about that.
Okay. I just have one question. Do you know Jill Irving Bishop, who's the Director, and do you think you can work with her?
I think I can work with her, yes. And I very much enjoyed working with her as she was with the Fintcom. So, now, as I've attended the meetings and really seeing, you know, what can be done here for Falmouth, I'm excited for the future growth and I know she's really pushing everyone that way, so that's exciting. When you go to some of the other towns here, and I've talked to Julianne, you see some of the other senior centers. I know what we can do for our town, so now it's, you know, when will we begin to do that?
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to take up the actual appointments in a few minutes. Next up is James Viera. Let me preface by saying it's good to see you back involved in government.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Want to explain a little bit for those who don't know you and why you might also be on.
My name's Jim Viera and I'm a native of Falmouth. And I have had several discussions with Jill about the Council on Aging. And I have recently become a Certified Aging in Place Specialist by the National Home Tools Association. And so, I have a few skills in that area to offer to Jill. And I also have to offer to the Council on Aging a fairly extensive background, as most of you know, in town affairs. So, I think that the Council can use some of the skills that I have and I hope to be able to serve the seniors in that capacity.
Okay. I'll open it up to questions. Brent?
Could you explain a little bit more about the Certified Aging in Place? It's something I've never heard of before and it seems to be a unique aspect that you could bring to this.
There are, currently, there are four Certified Aging in Place Specialists on Cape Cod. Basically, it's, it's three different areas that are melded into one. One is assisting, renovating a home for someone who's had a trauma, you know, coming home after a major surgery or something like that. The second aspect of it is renovating a home for a long-term condition like ALS or something like that. And then the third part of it, which is, which is my primary interest, is in preparing homes so that people can age in their homes and that they're adaptable over time, so that, for myself, for example, I'm 58. I intend to stay in my home as long as I can. So, I want to make sure that my home is set up so that when, if I do a major renovation project on my home, that it's still applicable for me when I'm 78 is when I'm 58. And that is really the kind of long-term planning that seniors and not-so seniors need to be doing so that enables them not to have to go into assisted living or some other type of care like that until the very, towards the end, so that they can really stretch out their time and stay in their homes and have the comfort and security of living in your home throughout whatever may develop in your retirement years.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That was my question I was going to ask, sorry.
Sure it was, yeah.
It was, yeah.
Doug?
I've got a tougher question. I think it'd be great to have you on there. How would you advise us to deal with, we have one term expiring on the June 2013 and we have one term expiring June 2015. If you were advising the Board, what would you tell us to do with our two people applying for it?
I don't think it really matters, quite frankly. You know, go alphabetically. I don't know, whatever, you know.
Okay. Thank you. That's a suggestion. Pat?
Yep, I must say.
I might, I might just make a comment. I'm very familiar with Mr. Viera, very familiar with Mrs. Ripley. And I want to say that looking at the people that Jill has recruited for this committee would be a great sign for anybody else in any other department in this community. She has sought out what I would consider some of the best and the brightest volunteers in this community. That includes some of our most recent additions to this committee as well. So, I take my hat off to those applicants and I take my hat off to Jill for trying to encourage them to get involved. These folks know where all the skeletons are in this community and they also know how to get jobs done. So, I'd be looking, first of all, to put both names into nomination. And this is for the Council on Aging. And then we can do the terms after we do that.
I move to put Susan Ripley and Jim Viera's names in nomination for the Council on Aging?
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, now, we do have two terms. One expires 6/30/15 and one expires 6/30/13. Would anyone like to take a stab at that motion? Keep in mind that, you know, most of these folks come back for reappearance as well. Yes?
I'd like to take Mr. Viera's suggestion and appoint, nominate Susan Ripley for the term ending 6, June 30, 2015. That's her name comes first in the alphabet and then Jim Viera for 6/30/13.
So, there's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nicole Goldman. Sorry, Nicole, you're near the end of the list here. Nicole is applying to be on the Historic Districts Commission. Can you explain a little bit about your interest in the Commission and give us a little information on yourself?
Sure. I gave you some information on my background. I have a few notes. I wanted to be on the Commission. I want to be on the Commission. I'm very passionate about architecture. I'm very passionate about design and construction. It's what I do for a living. I have a long background, a 30-year career in design, project management, construction. I have a business in, it's now five years old, it's going to be next month, in Mashpee. We do design and build. It does center on sustainability and historic preservation is among the most sustainable type of, of construction that we can do using the embodied energy. So, it's a real interest of mine. I have a 30-year history of summering in Falmouth and I became a full-time resident in 2005. Couple of projects that I worked on were the Historic Highfield and the Three Water Street where WCAI is now and really enjoyed those experiences being on the Building Committee with the Three Water Street project. We went to the Community Preservation Committee. We got a large grant which eventually was transferred to CAI. I was on the Children's School of Science Committee at the time. And, I mean, I can answer any questions. I have, I have all the skills. I have the architectural background. I know the terminology. I understand building materials. I do understand the mandates of the Historic Districts Commission and, you know, I've come up against it in various projects. And I did live in Concord Center for about 10 years in a historic home, so I've really had some personal experience maintaining that type of structure.
Okay. I'll open it up to questions, Doug.
I guess my question, maybe the obvious one, is there's going to be some conflict between restoration or historic building and sustainability.
Why so?
Well, there may be. I mean, maybe that the roof that is most historic may not be the one that's going to...
The most eco-friendly?
Right.
I understand that, but it's about historic preservation and I do understand the mandates of the Committee. That's, that's not the point.
Okay. Great. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. David?
I was just going to ask on your application, can you, what is FCAT Steering Committee? What does that stand for?
FCAT, Falmouth Climate Action Team.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm on the Steering Committee and I primarily work at it from a standpoint of business practices and sustainability, just, you know, conducting your business the right way. I'm also on the Cape Cod Orleans Green Steering Committee, which is the Cape Cod Chamber. So, yes, my interest is definitely in sustainability, but as I say, I think historic preservation completely embodies that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brent?
You owned a home in Concord, historic home. I imagine there you had either Historical Commission or Historic Districts Commission that you had to deal with, with your house?
Yes.
Was there a particularly difficult situation that you ran into with them where you found yourself at odds with them and...
No, nothing that I encountered. No, we did a small renovation, for instance, on our attic. We added some dormers. Those had to be approved as the proper shape, size, material, et cetera. We were fronting onto one of the main streets in Concord, so, no.
In your experience with Concord, did they, one of the arguments that goes on often is whether something should actually be of natural materials?
Yes, I understand.
Or whether it should simply look like it's of natural materials?
Correct.
How did Concord deal with that situation?
I think it's been very similar to activities here in Falmouth and I know that materials, we want to maintain the original materials if at all possible, if we can. And I know it comes down a lot to windows and sills and, you know, ornamental detail and things like that. That's just what the mandate is. I mean, that's what's asked of. And I think it's, I do feel it's vitally important to maintain the beauty of our architecture and our vernacular architecture. I mean, that's what makes our town special. That's why people come here. That's why we have visitors who come here. They come to the Village Green and they go, huh, it's, you know, it's so beautiful. Well, it is so beautiful, but that's because it's maintained. So, you know, I'm very proud, for instance, in how the Three Water Street building in Woods Hole was renovated because that was an absolute eyesore. And it was at the top of the hill and everybody comes into town, that was the first thing that they saw. So, you know, we were able to bring it back to its original 18, I don't know, mid-1800s look. It's, you know, it's terrific. And it was done with taking into consideration handicap accessibility, you know? That was a big issue and I know it's, you know, it's always a big issue, especially in any public building.
Thank you. Pat?
That was my question. Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions for you. Are you aware of the Historic Districts enabling in the Town of Falmouth?
What do you mean, enabling?
Well, Falmouth did not adapt, adopt the state Historic Districts regulations. We have a separate enablement.
I read the policy booklet of, yeah. And how does that differ from the state?
Well, the state has a different, I'm not on the Historic Districts. I can tell you from all the people who have been aggrieved have pointed out to me that Falmouth was implementing some state regulations that are not in fact in the Falmouth regulations.
You see.
So, you would be willing and able to make yourself educated enough to know what the Falmouth regulations are versus the state regulations?
Absolutely. That's what...
Okay, that, because that has been a bone of contention with some applicants.
That they cannot adapt to the Falmouth, well...
No, I'm saying Falmouth is less restrictive.
I understand, so they cannot adapt to the Falmouth, they want to stick with the state? That those, those people on the Commission wanted to stick with the state regulations as opposed to...
I wasn't at the meeting. I'm just telling you what the interpretation, well, I just want to make sure that you'd be willing to make yourself knowledgeable about that.
Yes, I mean, absolutely.
Okay. The next question is green versus historic preservation. Can you separate if someone doesn't want to be green?
Of course.
Okay, just a question. You brought up a great point. I'm very familiar with Three Water Street. It came out awesome. But keep in mind that was with the benefit of, of a grant of $250,000 that came from the CPC. Not every applicant before that Board has an endless pool of money to be able to...
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no. I mean, it was a, it was a big deal and we did it and it hadn't been asked before and I was, as I say, I'm very proud of it.
Okay. That, those were my questions and I appreciate your answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. What is the Board's pleasure? We have Nicole Goldman. The, we have three openings. All of them with terms expiring 6/30/17. Quite candidly, I don't know if there is a quorum on that group right now.
No, I guess not.
So, even, even if you're appointed, you may not be able to serve, would have to look at what the quorum numbers are until we actually get a quorum on the committee. I don't know what the number, if it's a five-person committee...
They can't meet until they have a quorum.
They cannot meet until they have a...
I can see that there were vacancies.
Right. So, there's, it's another vacancy as well, so. We have three terms open, 6/30/17. Do I have a motion?
I move putting Nicole Goldman's name in nomination for this position.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Do I have another motion for...
I move appointing Nicole Goldman to Historic Districts Commission, term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Motion is second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, thank you. All right, I will call one last, one last call for Samara Haver, Samara Haver here. Haver, Haver? Okay, we will try to reschedule that interview. That was for the Bike Ways Committee. Next up is a presentation for Google Fiber, open letter.
Hopefully, I'm not going to stutter too much when I do this. I do have some handouts for you.
Do you want to introduce yourself for the board too as well?
Yes. My name's Julianne Mares, and while I currently don't live in Falmouth, I would love nothing more than to live in Falmouth again. This is a town that I moved to having lived in Barnstable and being in fear that Falmouth was where you don't go. But I got friends here, and I realized how wonderful this town is. Unfortunately, it wasn't very cost-effective for me, so I had to go a little further, closer to the bridge, but I'm hoping to come back the next year. Aside from that, one of the main issues that we do have on Cape Cod, especially in the Upper Cape area, involves our younger people, anyone from the age of eighteen to twenty-seven. They're disappearing. In the last ten years, we have lost more than 25% of our young people, and they don't want to return. One of the many reasons for this is lack of jobs, lack of availability, and we don't always have the things that people want or need for working in today's economy, and that includes high-speed internet. If you look at the back of your wonderful little handout that has the speeds, you can see that Comcast, which I'm sure many of us have in our own homes, if not all of us, has the lowest possible speed of only 20 megabits per second, which, while faster than 56K, for those who remember it, which I'm sure all of you here do, I myself do, so, I've been on the internet for years. It's, it still takes a long time. Earlier tonight, before coming here, I was trying to download these exact notes, and it took me over fourteen minutes. If I was using something like Google Fiber, it would have taken me fourteen seconds, if that. The speeds are amazing, and more importantly than that, they open up a level playing field where people can have a choice of what they can have in their homes. Right now, your only choice is Comcast, or with your cellphone provider, getting one of the Mi-Fi devices. Now, if you're like me and you run your own at-home business, a Mi-Fi device of eighty dollars a month for ten gigabytes will run you eighty dollars. Problem is, it's ten dollars every time you go over. So, my cellphone bill for about a year and a half was around $2,000 just for the internet for a year. This is something that young people can't afford, entrepreneurs starting a new business can't afford. And why didn't I have Comcast? They refused to believe that my apartment existed, even here in Falmouth. I wasn't living very far from where Selectman Putnam lives, and they said that my home doesn't exist for a year. So, one of the reasons that we're looking at something like Google Fiber is it would make Cape Cod the only place on the entire eastern seaboard to have these kinds of speeds. It would be a magnet for business, it'd be a magnet when we have guests coming, because let's face it, we are one of those areas that we cut most of our business from the tourist trade. But we'd also keep people here, and that's the hardest part, is keeping people here. It would make Cape Cod a wonderful spot for entrepreneurs such as myself, but more importantly, technological entrepreneurs. Little companies like Google, Netflix, Foursquare, Facebook, many of them have either offices or bases in Massachusetts, and all of them are looking to expand in the next two years. All of them are looking for new homes. Wouldn't Cape Cod be a great one? Now, to get a real idea of why things like Google Fiber are the precedent, why they're important, is you need to understand that it was only a few short years ago we had 56K. It was only a few short years ago Cape Cod just got broadband, Cape Cod just got DSL, and the Upper Cape only just turned on 4G for your cellphones. The Lower Cape still doesn't have it. This would affect all of Cape Cod and the islands. And the fact that the CEO of Google spends at least one week a month on Nantucket because his wife lives there full-time isn't a very bad point. It could help convince them to come over to us. So, right now, they are accepting open letters, and I kind of lost where I was, so I'm sorry. So, I do have a written open letter, but I'm sure that some of you might have questions for me.
Well, I'll start it off a little bit, and, you know, one of the questions is going to be that they've just spent a considerable amount of money on Open Cape, and explain to me a little bit about Google Fiber versus something like Open Cape, as well as the fact that, do we have to put this infrastructure in? Is this a community project, or is this something that would be paid for by Google?
I...
There's two questions here.
The second part of the question, I'm actually not sure on, unfortunately. My email got hacked, if anybody knows, GoDaddy went down, and I haven't been able to actually look at the notes until before I got here. But as far as comparing it with Open Cape, while Open Cape is faster than FiOS, which doesn't exist on Cape Cod, of course, it's not exactly the future. It's going to be very difficult, because it is a community project and a government project, to speed up Open Cape. Open Cape very well may stay at the exact same speeds that it is at. And I'll be honest, I, like I said, run my business off the internet, and I never heard of Open Cape. I watch public access daily, and I never knew it was happening.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to Kat, because I know she has some questions.
Who are you representing? I mean, you're asking us to, I'm not sure what you're asking us to do, but who do you represent?
Mostly the young people of Falmouth.
No, but I mean, in terms of what are you selling? Are you selling something?
Google Fiber.
So, do you represent Google?
No, I represent us sending an open letter to the company, which they are now accepting open letters, to request where this project goes.
Oh. Go ahead, Brian.
Maybe I can help shed a little bit of light on this, because this is the industry in which I work. First and foremost, it would be no cost to the town, to the communities. What Google is doing is it's stepping into the realm of internet access. As a lot of companies oftentimes branch off into new ventures, Google is now doing this themselves. They have, in fact, I read an article today about how Google has developed a lot of what Google uses in terms of its own computers and switches and such. It builds itself, because what a lot of companies might buy off the shelf aren't good enough. They're not fast enough, they're not powerful enough. Google actually does a lot of its own engineering for its servers and its switches and such. And they're taking that knowledge now, and they're basically opening it up to the marketplace. And they've started in, I think it's Kansas City is the first area of the country where they started rolling this out, and they're going to roll it out across the country as time goes on. And what Ms. Mares is talking about is the fact that they're basically soliciting invitations and saying, look, who wants it? And quite frankly, I think this is a phenomenal idea. You, I think if you recall, when we had the interviews for the Town Manager's position last year, one of the gentlemen who we had in here, he was from Williamstown, I think, and the question was asked of him, you know, what he thought of the whole Open Cape and so on, and was it going to be a great thing? And he said, you know what, it's just going to level the playing field. It's just going to get us to where the rest of the state is and where many of the parts of the country are right now. What this does is, we would leapfrog, as Ms. Mares said, we would, if we had Google Fiber here, we'd have the fastest internet access on the eastern seaboard. We would leapfrog the rest of the country, except for, at this point, Kansas City, and it would make us hugely attractive to technology companies, to entrepreneurs. It would make Cape Cod not just a destination for sitting on the beach with a drink, it would make us a destination for companies that actually want to build a presence in the world and give us something that nobody else has. So, I wholeheartedly endorse the idea of supporting this letter, and I would hope that we're not the first of the communities that you're going to be approaching about this idea, because it's phenomenal. Years ago, they talked to, I don't know if you remember, there was a Cape Cod Technology Council, I don't even know if it still exists.
It does.
But they talked years ago about turning Cape Cod into these quote-unquote silicon sandbar, try to bring high-tech companies here, and the lack of internet access, the fact that there was no high-speed access was a huge impediment, and even today, you don't see a lot of technology companies on the Cape because of that. And if we could bring Google here, and certainly if he's vacationing on Nantucket...
Exactly, his wife lives there full-time.
What a good time, what a good time.
Well, I have kind of like a concern here, in that normally, I don't know why this is being presented to us, because I don't know anything about this, I've never heard of it before, and it may have huge value, both to individuals, I mean, people who live here, I don't know what possible value it could have for the town, but I would think that the way to do this would be to have someone make a presentation to the town manager and ask the town manager if anyone, if any town departments could use this or something, but I don't know what I'd even be voting on, because I don't understand really what this is, who's impacted by it, what the costs are, who's going to benefit from it. I just don't think it even belongs here in our discussion, because it's a, it sounds to me like it's a business proposal, on the one hand, and it could, it's also, in a sense, a business proposal to an individual. If you want something, here's how you can get it. Do you have to pay for it?
If you actually look at the back of the handout that I passed you, it breaks down the pricing per person, and that is, if you want the free internet, you just pay for the construction fee, that's it, then there's the seventy dollars...
And who do you pay?
You pay the company, you pay Google.
So, anybody who wants to do this has to go on and get a Google account. I'm really not very comfortable with us being pitched a Google product here on the Board of Selectman that maybe our citizens might want to consider. I don't know, I'm just...
Well, I, first of all...
You're the chairman, Mrs. Chairman.
I know, and that's, we have, you know, it's constructive to be able to have some dialogue.
Yes, it is.
I was approached and told about this Google Fiber. Everything in this community is not based about the government in this community. I mean, so this is an option. Open Cape is not coming to my house. Open Cape, at this point in time, is not coming to my business. It's only coming to town government.
No, no, no.
At this point...
Open Cape is only building fiber.
I know.
It's the rest of it.
That's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, for us to sit here and sit here and wait and wait and wait, because Open Cape is coming, it might be not the most prudent thing in the world. Let's listen to what we have out there as options. I believe what this young lady is asking us is to write a letter to Google saying, we're interested in this, period.
In what way?
Already written.
Pardon me?
Already written. Just needs to be signed.
Maybe it would be helpful if you either gave us a copy of the letter or read us what the letter is, so she'd at least understand...
Which I was planning on doing.
Because I don't know what that is.
Well, if everybody else does, that's fine. I don't, so I don't...
You don't want to look at it?
I'm happy to look at it.
Okay.
Go ahead. Could I, I just want to draw an analogy, because in the last few years, you may recall that we renewed our license agreement with Comcast. And during those discussions, one of the things that this board did was we reached out and we said, Verizon, we would like to see you come into town with FiOS. We want to see more competition, we want to see more options for our citizens. We sent Verizon a letter, Verizon basically came back and said, eh, we're not interested, we're not coming to the Cape anytime soon. This is not all that different. We're basically being asked by this young lady to sign onto a letter, reach out to Google and say, look, we want more competition, we want to see other companies come down here and give us other options for internet access. And wouldn't you know it, this is, I don't know, a hundred times, yeah, a hundred, two-hundred times better than what FiOS has to offer. If, whether we bring it, whether we ask Verizon to come into town or we ask Google to come into town, it's a matter of saying, listen, let's get Cape Cod up to speed and let's stop being, let's face it, an internet backwater, where we're not going to get a lot of economic growth or development when companies are struggling to get the kind of access that when you just go across the bridge and go to metropolitan Boston, they already have a lot of this.
Wouldn't we rely on our cable advisory committee to make a recommendation? I mean, I know...
We're not, we're not anywhere near that. We're just asking the company to consider us and then make a pitch maybe to our cable advisory committee. Remember, our contract allows us to have other companies, I believe, yes?
I just want to be clear that the cable contract is for cable communications only and is not included in that.
Right.
So, internet is a separate item.
Okay.
You know, another fiber network that's hung on the same poles.
Okay. So, we need the letter here.
Yes.
I mean, you should have started with that, because, I mean, I might...
I was told to finish with it, so I apologize.
Okay. Do you have copies of it there?
I only have the one copy, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
And this is not something we're voting on tonight, anyway. This is a presentation...
We can, it's going to be up to you, you folks.
Well, we can't vote if it's not listed as a vote.
All right. I don't know what the...
I keep being told that...
That's, that's fine, so let's hear the letter, and then we can decide whether we want to...
It's a presentation.
I know, I know, but let's hear what the letter is, it's part of the presentation. We've got to find out what they wanted to present.
Dear Google Board of Executives, this letter has been constructed for the purpose of asking one particular question. Will you bring Google Fiber to Cape Cod? Here on Cape Cod, we have been facing an economic stagnation for the last twenty-plus years. Within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Cape has been at a disadvantage when it comes to the services we have to offer to residents and to visitors. One of the most important destinations for vacationers across the world, we have been stuck with limited choices of internet service providers. Comcast is our only option for high-speed internet service, in spite of the fact that we are only an hour from the Boston metropolitan area and forty-five minutes from Providence, Rhode Island. Most Cape residents are unhappy having only one choice for high-speed internet, and it has definitely put a strain on local businesses, too. One of Cape Cod's other major problems is the number of young people leaving here. Between the year of 2000 and 2010, Cape Cod lost 25% of its young people. With the number of services here being limited, it is most definitely not at all a help to the growing demographic imbalance. Our hope in writing to you is that you will bring the incredible new service to our home, to our homes, and we can then move forward in greatly strengthening our local economy. My hope as the writer of this letter is that more of my fellow young people will move back and young entrepreneurs will start their businesses here instead of other, instead of in other major cities in Massachusetts. Cape Cod is an incredible place. We are home to some of the most beautiful beaches in the world and hopes to so many vacationers every summer. Google Fiber is a service that would complete the experience we have to offer vacationers, businesses, and residents, not only in the summer, but year-round. With high hopes, we look forward to hearing from you soon.
Okay, and I would like you to submit that to us so we get an idea, and we probably, when you say sign onto a letter, if we were to do it, we would probably write our own letter...
Of course.
...with an attachment and that nature. You say that you made this presentation to other folks, any other communities?
We are going to be making this presentation all across the Cape.
Okay, okay. All right. Does anyone else have any other questions before we move forward?
Just, just one, Mr. Chairman. Is this whole issue going to be lost in an abyss somewhere, or are we going to bring it back so we can...
No, no, I'll put this on...
...for a vote or whatever we're going to do?
I'll put this on future agenda in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Next week is a very full agenda, probably the week after.
Okay.
And we can discuss it, bring it up for a vote. I'd ask also that the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager, maybe you could find some time to meet with them?
Absolutely.
And explain a little bit more in depth about what you're talking about?
Good thing about owning your own business, you make your own schedule.
All right, okay. And I want to hope that the entire board has an open mind about any options we have here. I know that there's been quite an investment by Open Cape to come to the Cape, but that does not mean that we can't...
This is not Open Cape.
I know it's not Open Cape. You're exactly right, it's not. So, maybe we have another tool in our toolbox as we move forward. Maybe we don't, but we'll find that out.
On a personal note, the reason I'm so for this isn't just my own costs and my own fees. I moved to Cape Cod when I was thirteen years old, from Pennsylvania, because I had to. But one of the main reasons that my father couldn't come with us is because he couldn't do business here. He was in the technology industry, and he couldn't get speeds fast enough to do what he needed to do, where he wouldn't be on a phone to Taipei and racking up phone bills. So, because of that, I lost three years with my dad. And to have this, where people can start a business from home, or even grandparents can see grandkids... to have this where people can start a business from home, or even grandparents can see grandkids being born via Skype all the way out in California, it'd be a great thing for everybody on the Cape.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to ask a question about the pricing lists on the back, now, if I wanted to say purchase internet and HDTV.
Mm-hmm.
I would contact Google.
Mm-hmm.
And then, when they say no construction fee, does that mean they already have the fiber access?
I believe it means you wouldn't be charged for them dropping the line to you because I think they do use the same exact lines that anybody else would use.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be any extra fee to you unlike, say, with Dish Network where they'd have to put someone up on your roof.
Right, and put it, and put it, so whatever fiber's out there now, they would just simply make a connection from whatever that fiber is and link it to your home or your business?
I believe that is exactly how it works.
That's how it would work, okay.
Again, these are examples of what it was somewhere else then?
Those are examples.
Okay.
But for any individual who wanted to purchase this Google service, they would have to contact Google directly?
They'd have to have Google Fiber in their area first.
Oh, they'd have to have it in their area?
I can't just call up Google and be like, hey, I want to get rid of Comcast.
So, is Google planning to put, hang fiber?
She's asking us, she's asking us to ask them to put it.
To put the fiber in our area so they can do this.
Right, and then anyone can make their own decision.
I see, okay.
That's what she's asking us, the letter to Google to say, hey, come to Cape Cod.
Oh, okay.
That's really what she's asking us.
So they need a lot of support so that they can go to the licensing people and all the people who license the hanging of fiber, and I don't know who does that, in order to be able to hang fiber, in order to be able to provide the service, is that the idea?
I believe what the idea is, they are looking for the places that want it and need it.
And then they can prove, show that they, to the authorities, that yes, we have all these people who wish to sign up with us, so therefore, we would like to be approved for hanging fiber in your area, something like that.
One of the real challenges in Kansas City.
And that would be, the FCC probably and state telecommunications?
One of the real challenges in Kansas City is that not all neighborhoods are getting it, that some neighborhoods can't get enough people to sign on, and if they can't get their neighbors to agree, then that neighborhood doesn't get it.
Oh, I see.
And other neighborhoods do get it, and so there's now a, you know, bit of a conflict in the Kansas, so some get it, some don't, it isn't, once it's in Kansas City, everyone in Kansas City can get it, they have to then go neighborhood by neighborhood to expand.
But that's also the experimental area where they're trying to figure it out, they're sort of the test dummy.
I remember when we originally had cable in Falmouth, I was hoping it'd come down my street finally, but now, now I regret that it did, okay, all right, so thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And again, if you can leave the letter with the town manager, he'll, he'll get it, and hopefully you can set up an appointment with them to explain a little bit more at length.
Thank you.
Request for assigned variants, Falmouth Rotary Club, 12th Annual Craft Show, Marina Park, September the fifteenth and sixteenth. Mr. Kirfert, how you doing?
Fine, thank you.
All right.
And thank you for the board again, I'm Bill Kirfert, Falmouth Rotary, in charge of their sign committee, we're here for the signed variants from the, from the selectmen to be able to post our sandwich signs along the roadway area and next to the annual craft fair, this is our twelfth one, again, we thank you so much for allowing us to start the craft fair, and it has been well received by the town, and it's been a great success. I'd like to, to request what we normally have, a notice on the Gus County Recreation Center event sign, which by the way, the interplay with the selectmen led to that, so we, after putting up a flag for so many years, we decided in, in talking back and forth that why not build the display sign that's there now, and that worked out very well, Ellen is extremely happy with how that worked out, but we place on it, we request to place our name on it for this week, just leading up to the fair this weekend, and then we have a second sign, that's a thirty-square-foot sign that's displayed right on Scranton Avenue attached to the edge of the area, so anyone going back and who originally says what's happening here can see, and then we have eleven small sandwich lean-to signs that are six-square-foot, and they're placed at roadside locations throughout the town of Falmouth. This is the same request, same number of signs that we've asked you for, for the past five years, and so I'm here again to, to request that.
Okay, and then just so I can read it to the record, I won't read the entire letter from the Design Review Committee from Arthur Calfee, the committee recommends this sign, it's to the Board of Selectmen, the DRC voted against the request for a blanket favorable decision to be used over a number of years, and would like to see the applicant each year to confirm the lack of any changes, so they recommend it this year, they just want to make sure you come back and continue to see us. Well, I have any questions or a motion?
Dates on the sandwich board signs?
Second.
Oh, no, there was not, he said the dates.
When will these sandwich board signs go up, will they go up starting today?
September.
They will start going up tomorrow, then after your approval.
September the tenth to the sixteenth would be the authorized date, so it would have been effective today.
Okay.
So, I'm moving from.
Need a motion?
Motion?
Are we hoping, are they going to be taken in at night the way our other sandwich board signs are, or?
I believe they leave them out because they're, they're in exterior locations, they're only up for a week, and they have been in the past.
Great.
And then we immediately remove them after the event.
Move approval of the assigned variants for the year two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I suppose, I just have it, thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Next up is vote, liaison policy, discuss and vote, we had it at our meeting last week, some discussion about the committee liaison, I left a couple of changes in writing, sorry, I had one typed on there, but, that, I'd like to see, see if we could consider those changes, and that would be under the, the general policy responsibilities, so I don't know, did everyone get the ones that?
Yes.
Mine would be to keep informed the activities of the assigned committees, I'm sorry, I put the word activities in there, by reviewing the committee's minutes, and then B would be provide a contact email address and phone number to the committee chair to establish the flow of information, number C would stay the same, and then number three, the role of liaison is not to advocate on behalf of the committee, under no circumstances other liaisons to engage in any deliberation or participate in any vote of their assignment, and that's a blending of what was currently there before in addition to, those are just my thoughts, I don't know if the board has any others. Yep.
My only concern is, I would probably say, your suggestion A to keep informed of the activities of the assigned committee's activities, and I would perhaps put in there, for example, by reviewing the committee's minutes or attending meetings.
Okay, that's what.
Just because I, I don't want to, it almost makes it sound like you're not allowed to attend meetings.
Okay, so you're saying, just keep it by reviewing the committee's minutes and attending meetings?
Yeah, I would just say, for example.
All right.
By reviewing the committee's minutes or attending meetings.
I have a problem.
Go ahead.
I have a problem with C, I think if a selectman, for whatever reason, chooses to check the references, that, that an applicant puts on their application, I think it's up to the individual selectman to do that, if they choose to, I, I don't think it should be a requirement, and I, I also don't think it's appropriate that, that, that the liaison would be the one who would make a recommendation for appointment to the board, by the board, I think these are responsibilities that each of us have, to look at the individuals, to read their applications, if we don't know them, may, maybe to find, to maybe ask people that we know or whatever, and then, and then let us deliberate as the board whether or not we wish to appoint, I'm troubled by each of us with the liaison assignments to have that responsibility.
Could I offer some insight into that?
Go ahead.
That line, and what we're talking about here is to C, check references for those individuals applying to be a member of a board-appointed committee and to make recommendation for said appointments to the full board, and the reason why that language was included, one was, first of all, oftentimes references are not checked, so we may have applicants in front of us who the board is seeing, and in spite of the fact that these folks go through the effort to provide references, nobody calls their references, this way it would establish that somebody has that responsibility, the other thing, of course, is that it's a duplication of effort that we may not want to do, that to have all five members call all three references, now you've got three people who are getting phone call after phone call after phone call, and it's an inconvenience to those folks when if one person, one member of the board was simply assigned to do this task, we know that one person will do it, their responsibility is to make sure it's done, and then, of course, they can come back to the board and say, I checked the references, this individual is, you know, a fine-upstanding citizen, and I have no objections to the, the appointment or something to that effect. There are, in fact, other communities where him, for example, follows this practice, where a member of the board is assigned to check references and bring back a recommendation to the board, so it's not unusual, it's perhaps a little unusual for Falmouth, we've never done it before, but it's, I think, a gap in our appointment process, and of course, in years past, we've had issues with conflicts between members of the committees, and this is just one method, if you will, one means to ensure that we are in fact checking references, that we are in fact ensuring that the members of the committee are going to get along, if you will.
Well, I, I'm not against this idea, but I do have a couple of devil's advocate questions here, one is, to check a reference, are we going to say, well, I called so-and-so and guy said the guy is, or the person is, you know, not what they appear to be, and, and I don't know why he put my name down, my question is, these are still volunteers, I'm a little perplexed on how we're going to make that, make that public, because this is an open public meeting, we all have that opportunity, typically when I see someone applying for committee, I look at the references, and if there's someone I know as one of the references, that's usually the person I will call, because I have a relationship with that person, I'm usually at odds when I don't have a relationship because I really don't know who I'm talking to, it could be their aunt for all I know, you know, if you follow what I'm saying, so that's my devil's advocate in that, these, you know, in fact, they are, they are people who are volunteering, and I, I don't know how we would express that at a meeting, and again, that would be one individual board member's opinion of what he got out of a conversation, that's where I have some reservations, the other, the other question is, I surely don't want this to morph into the people in the committee want this person, because I don't want it to become a good old boys' or girls' club either, we look for different types of folks on different committees that have different rules of thought, I don't want people to, to go along to get along, I want them to be able to interact just like we have a good productive board, you know, as we move forward, so we have to take all of those into account.
Well, I, I just look at it as, we are an appointing authority, and therefore, we have a responsibility to exercise that authority in, in an appropriate fashion, and I think we also have to respect the privacy of the individuals who are applying, as you say, these are people who are volunteering to do work that we need good people to do, and I think we've been here long enough in the community that we know the people who apply, and we know who they are for the most part, if we don't, we know someone who knows them, but I think each in our own way, because of our own context in the community, I think it's our responsibility individually to do our own due diligence on this, and not to somehow get too, make it too complex so that it becomes more like a, a job interview or a job reference rather than a citizen who's coming forward and saying, I've decided it's time when I can really begin to help out, and this is where I think I can do it.
Could I suggest maybe adding a phrase, if necessary, I mean, for instance, I didn't call Jim Viera's references, I'm not sure any of us did, because we wouldn't feel it was necessary, but this policy would require us to do so, and I would think to have a policy that we know we're not going to follow, I have a problem with, but there could be an applicant that none of us have ever met, and it would be highly appropriate to call the references, they may have just moved to town, we don't know them, and they would be good, and it would be very appropriate at that point to call where they'd worked in the past to find out how they serve in committees, so if we just add the phrase, check references if necessary, that gives you the freedom as liaison to say, okay, this is the time that needs to be done, I will serve as the representative of the board to check those references, but it also doesn't tie our hands that we have to do it when.
So what you're saying is, check references if necessary for those individuals applying?
Right.
I can live with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Great idea, I, I like the idea, because I, I agree, I think we're all very familiar with Mr. Viera, and there was no need for any of us to check his references because we know him personally, and we know his work for the town, I think to address some of the concerns that have been raised, obviously, we don't want to sit here and malign anyone, either intentionally or accidentally, and I think when we do check references, and I'll use an example that I myself stumbled across a few years ago, where, same thing, application, somebody I didn't know, but I recognized the name that they had on there, and I called that individual, and come to find out, that individual, like you said, didn't even know they were being used as a reference, and they knew this person only in passing, they happened to live on the same street, but this was an individual who was not a full-time resident of town, and so it was an awkward situation for this reference because, like you say, they weren't even asked to be a reference, now, obviously, that's something that the individuals in question, I haven't shared with anybody and probably never will, I, I think obviously we're in a role here in a position where we have to use a certain degree of discretion, but at the same time, we've had situations in the past few years where members of committees have not only had conflicts behind closed doors, but even out into the open to the point of getting the town involved in litigation, we want to try to avoid that, obviously, and that's one of the reasons for ramping up this policy a little bit and trying to add some more checks and balances, I like Mr. Jones's suggestion, if necessary, I think it, it gives us the necessary out when it's not necessary to, to check someone's references, but I think that there has to be someone responsible for checking references if it is necessary, and I think it does need to be spelled out, it's something that hasn't been done in the past, I think, on a frequent enough basis.
Okay, so, do you want to move down this one issue at a time, is that all right? Are we in general agreement about the definitions, assignments, we're going to go through the actual committees again before we end, the applicability, as we move forward, if someone has some comments, please bring them up, general policy and responsibilities, number one, I think was fine, is the board willing to go along with, number two, with the suggestion Mr. Putnam made on my correction, by reviewing the, example, by reviewing the committee's minutes and attending meetings?
Or.
Or attending meetings? Okay, and then B would be the way it's currently written, and then C would not remain the same, but it would implement the words, check references if necessary for those individuals applying to be a member of the board-appointed committee and to make recommendations for said appointments to the full board, and then number three, if the board's willing to accept my recommendation, the role of liaison is not to advocate on behalf of the committee, under no circumstances are the liaisons to engage in any deliberation or participate in any vote of their assignments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Now, for instance, although I'm not the liaison to the ZBA, but they were in front of us a few months ago, and I have brought up the fact that two things came out of that meeting, which were, and if I'm advocating for them, and I'm not the liaison, well, I'm advocating for them, like the, the zoning book needs to be redone, I brought that up, and also the fact that they needed help with enforcement, and then when you get to the beach committee, when I had gone to them, I brought issues back.
It's reporting, and that's fine.
You know, regarding the use of the money from the casino, for instance.
Right.
And because I've asked for it continually, am I advocating for them? Maybe, I'm actually advocating for the taxpayer, but.
Well, and I, I agree, I, I think what we don't want is the individual liaison bringing their report to the Board of Selectmen. report to the board of selectmen. I think the committee needs to bring that report to the board.
Oh, okay.
If you follow what I mean. Each and every one of us, it's kind of like, you know, the conflict of interest. I know so many people in this community. Am I gonna disclose that I know, you know, I could look around the room, and I know everyone in this room. So, I mean, to what extent? Do you have to make some value judgments of what advocating for, or is or is not?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess I'm uncomfortable with the word advocate, and the original language said not to influence their assignments. And I think that's more appropriate here, because our role as a liaison to whichever committee is to be an interface, to be a conduit to this board, and not necessarily to try to influence that committee or influence the decisions it makes. I agree with what Mr. Bragg is saying, that we will oftentimes advocate positions that these committees bring to us. And I don't think that that's inappropriate at all, because we're elected to have an opinion. And whether it's an opinion we developed from talking to somebody in a coffee shop, or whether it's an opinion that we developed by sitting and listening to a committee that we may be meeting with, it's an opinion nevertheless. And it is, I would tend to agree with what Mr. Bragg is saying. It's advocating. And so for us to sit here and have a policy that says that we're not supposed to advocate, when in fact, that's our job, is to hold an opinion and to advocate an opinion.
I always heard Mr. Bragg's points as advocating his opinion, not on behalf of the committee. And I think that's the distinction, is that you can learn something by going to these committees, and you now have your own opinion, and you believe it strongly, and you're gonna fight for it, but you're not acting on behalf of the committee.
Oh, no, I don't think so, because, for instance, they discuss these items at their meeting.
Sure.
And I said, "I'm the liaison, I'll bring it back." I mentioned it a couple of times here, haven't gotten an answer yet, but working on it. But, I mean, if that's considered advocating, that's what I'm getting at. I don't want to get my, you know.
Right. But, I mean, I think we've had members in the past who carried the flag
I see what you're saying. Yeah, well, I understand.
For their committee.
Yes.
And that was inappropriate. I mean, the committee needs to be able to state their case.
Well, then, how do we make that distinction, then, I guess?
Well, let's work on that. That's what I'm trying to say. You know, maybe it's all in the language. Maybe, you know, maybe we not say the word advocate, but is not to present the case for, you know, or do the work of the committee. I'm searching here to come up with a term.
Do the work of. Maybe that's the role of the liaison is not to influence or do the work of their assignments.
But actually, you kind of have it there, is not to engage in deliberation or participate in a vote. That's really what it's about.
I know that. But what I'm saying is, I don't think we want the individual selectmen to, who are the liaisons, to be the mouthpiece for the committee.
Right.
We don't want them to come before the board. We have a committee there that needs to come. They want something, they need to come before the board and ask the board for that. And, you know, not that we want to, you know, open up here, do his box, but typically, they work with the professional staff, who works with the town manager, who ultimately will come before the board. Don't want to do the end-around, where a member of the board of selectmen comes and makes a presentation on their behalf, because they do a lot of hard work for a committee. No?
Yes. I mean, but I've just never seen it happen, that where a member of a committee, I, I've never seen a member of a committee come to the board and advocate for the board.
No, I'm not talking about the member of the committee. I'm talking about committees. I mean, I'm talking about members of the board advocating for a committee.
For a committee.
Is the purpose of the liaison to keep the board of selectmen informed as to what the committee is doing?
Yeah, that's it.
Then if they are reporting what the committee is doing, then they're doing their job, right?
Yeah.
Right. If they're, they're reporting what they're doing. But when you're advocating, taking a stand, "We need to do this," it might not meet the capital plan, it might not meet a lot of staffing plans, because we know each and every department is thin. And with all due respect, there are gonna be some expectations from these committees when we serve as their liaison. We want you to fight for, you know, and we're fighting for the entire town. We've gotta look at the big picture, is usually what I tell folks. We've got only a small pot of money, and we try to make sure that we feed the entire family in this, in this case.
But, you know, we've held liaison assignments for a long time.
Oh, I know we have.
And I don't remember where that's ever happened, except maybe once, once, only that I can recall. And that, and that, the person was immediately suggested to that individual that that's not the role. And that was it, and that was the end of it. So I don't think we should belabor this too much, because I think if each selectman knows and understands that their role is not to deliberate, and not to, and not to vote or participate in the voting process, that's all you need to know.
Okay. I think you said it, "Do the work of." And so rather than, say, advocate, I would suggest that we, that the first line in paragraph three say, "The role of liaison is not to do the work of or influence their assignments."
Okay.
Could we be positive and just say what the role is, is to report?
Yeah.
To the board of selectmen, what the committee's, what the actions or the workings or whatever, I mean.
So change the, change that first sentence to, to say something completely different, like the role of the liaison is to report to the entire board.
To access the current information between their assignments and the board of committee, and to report to the board of selectmen.
Well, we already, we already say that in two A, two B.
Okay. Well, maybe we have to have a negative then.
I think, yeah, and I think the whole idea of putting the third paragraph in there was to address some of the concerns that Mr. Murphy's talking about, that, you know, we've may have had a situation or two in the past where somebody on the board overstepped their bounds and actually participated as a member of the committee, to which they were simply only supposed to be a liaison. Would that work, then?
That's fine with me. I have no problem.
The role of liaison is not to do the work of or influence their assignments.
Right. And then keep, keep the rest of what you have there.
Yes.
Okay. So are we in agreement here? Pat, do you still have concerns with that?
I do.
Okay. What would you like to say?
Well, I think I already said that I agree with Doug, that you could just simply say, "This is what you do. You are there, and you bring back to the board any concerns that you may be asked to bring back," or may, period. And I think if we just understand among ourselves that we're not there to do their job, I don't think we, I just.
See, I don't want to be asked by a committee to bring something forward to the board.
I've never been asked by a committee.
I know, but you just said that.
What?
You just said that we're there to, you know, to bring forward what they ask us to bring to the board. And I don't want to, maybe misspoke.
I didn't mean it, and that's, I didn't know.
I mean, I don't want to do that.
No, I misspoke when I said that.
Because it might not be good, because I might not agree with that.
No, you're right.
It might not be fair to the rest of the board.
I misspoke when I said that. It's only to report where appropriate, or where needed, or where necessary.
But I don't think that paragraph three prevents us from doing that.
No.
I think paragraph three, right now, just prevents us from doing what we shouldn't be doing, so.
That's right.
I don't think it's, I'm not sure it's necessary, but it doesn't hinder appropriate actions.
All right. So are you happy, Doug, with Brent's new language there, then?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Number four, everyone happy with that? I know that. Number five?
The only thing on number four is, I mean, do you want to be given, should we give the chair the flexibility to appoint someone in their stead? Maybe the chair who was the year before, to create continuity, not as a requirement, but just as opposed to having written, "This is what we always do," saying, "The chair or his designee will serve."
Or even, people understand, like moderators and planning boards, and not even the planning board, because they don't, but they, if the chairman of the planning board has something to communicate to the selectmen.
How about the chair, how about we just leave the word, the chair or his, the chair or their designee? You can leave it at that, because, you know, when you're the chairman, candidly.
Everybody comes to you.
I know that, but, you know, the finance committee is something that you typically meet with. There are some of these committees, you know, the school department. These are some of the things that come with the chairmanship, as you put it back together.
Yeah, that's right. It goes with the being the chair.
You know, right. It's not always the easy part of the job.
Right.
Because it's always usually about money. But how about we just change the word, "The chair or their designee will serve as liaison." So in other words, the chairman has the opinion to think, "You know what? You can do a better job with the school department," or something of that nature, okay?
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
All right. Then number five, liaison assignments will be made with all of the town and regional, state-level individual committees and organizations included, but limited to. And I'm looking for my list of what we eliminated last week.
Well, before we say that, I just think that state level really doesn't fit into this policy. This is the liaison with boards and committees. I see it as an internal policy, not affecting persons and organizations outside of the town. I mean, if the state people want to communicate with the town, they usually communicate directly with the town manager, because that's where the operations take place. It has to do with a bill pending, or, "I want to let you know where your bill is," or something like that. So I don't think that we should kind of step into that situation, because I think it would be confusing. If they had to call a liaison, when what they really needed was specific information from the DPW to clear up some language that was filed in a petition or in a bill, they should be calling the town manager or the DPW director, and not, not us, I think. That's why. I don't think any agency or state people should be included in this. That's just my opinion.
When we discussed this last time, we had suggested, we had suggested removing the local emergency planning committee, the state and county representatives, regional waste implementation committee.
Yeah. What is that? Did you figure out what it was?
Again, a lot of these were pulled from the town's website.
For the book, yeah.
So they may not exist, or they may not be appropriate. The EDIC, the charter review committee, the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, and the Board of Assessors. It was all suggested that we strike all of those.
Right. And the ones that have selectmen on them, too, because.
Right, the EDIC.
Yeah, like the EDIC.
Does the Gulf Advisory Committee, does that have a selectmen, this designee?
It did, but that was Kerry.
It had me.
And then he's the one.
I was it, and I sent plenty of emails to them, but I never heard from anybody.
So therefore, we, were you a liaison, or were you actually a member?
Liaison. I was assigned to it. Somebody listed.
That's what I'm saying. Didn't we have a member? And we let Kerry continue to serve, or you did?
Yes, that's what happened. Kerry continued to serve.
Just like Ahmaud continued for our veterans.
To serve on the Veterans Council, right.
I understand what Pat was talking about, was the original opening line, liaison assignments will be made with all other town, region, and state-level individuals. Why don't we just strike the word "state-level individuals"? All right? Pat, are you happy with that? Okay? And so it would be.
Or even region. You don't need to include, I mean, region.
I don't know. Sometimes it might be with the sheriff's department or something like that. Would that be considered? I don't know. No?
I think that people, those people, if they want to talk to somebody in the selectmen, they call the chair. That's what they do. And they couldn't keep up with liaison assignments. It's supposed to be changed every year.
Okay. With all of the town committees and organizations included, but not limited to.
I'm gonna read them.
So I agree with Brent. Take out the collaborative, the charter review, the EDIC, the local.
Yeah, these were the ones that we, last time.
Yeah, that we took out before.
Can we go down the list, then, so I can make sure I got them all, that are coming out?
Well, the, from the top, the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, the Board of Assessors, excuse me, Board of Assessors, Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, those two would be removed. The Charter Review Committee.
Not the Board of Health? Why'd I have that marked out?
No, the Board of Health would stay.
Yeah.
How do you actually liaison with them when they meet when we do?
You can't, because it's the same night.
That can be difficult, yeah. But that's also why.
Okay.
You get other terms.
Yeah, other means of.
All right, gotcha.
Maintaining contact.
Perfect.
Let's see. The Charter Review Committee.
Yep.
EDIC, Gulf Advisory Committee, I guess.
How about the local planning committee? Doesn't they work directly with the planning board, I think?
Yeah.
We could remove that.
And this one under V, Vision of Falmouth, it never happened.
Yeah, the Vision of Falmouth.
I was asked to do it, yeah, and it just never happened.
The what?
The Regional Waste Water Implementation.
Yeah, what is that? I don't even know.
I don't know, but I'm assigned to it on this thing, along with the, on this list.
The Vision of Falmouth?
Yeah. But what is it?
I have no idea. I was assigned to the.
This is 2010.
I know, but I've been the only one on it, on the Cape Cod Water Collaborative, and this Regional Water Implementation Committee I'm assigned to. I got no idea what it is. Okay.
And the Steamship Authority?
Okay. Yeah, cool, we have.
That's a governmental.
Yeah, they come in and give us presentations anyways. I mean, I've attended some of those meetings, and I think anyone's welcome to do that.
Oh, yeah, you can go, but they're.
Right. They're not looking for your input.
No. No, they're not. And the Transportation Management Commission, at the moment, is in limbo.
Yeah. As is, as without the historic district. As is the historic district right now, because they don't have a board.
Well, that's true. And the Vision of Falmouth. Wasn't that just a little working group that was, when they were doing, trying to do the local comprehensive plan?
It never happened. We never even had one meeting.
It never even happened. So that doesn't exist. All right. I have to redo my numbers here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Can I ask one question? We still, on the actual committees?
Yeah.
So let's stay with those. Does anyone else have any other ones they want to drop? All right. And then the next question is, do we want to group some of these together? Brent, we had talked about this, but.
Yeah, I was waiting for feedback. I didn't get much. I think if we want to, if anybody has any suggestions, I can certainly throw together some ideas that I have, presented to the board at a later date.
I got it somewhere.
That sounds fine. Okay. Okay. And then liaison assignments will be made according to preference of the individual selectmen, or two or more selectmen request an assignment, seniority shall decide. Selectmen shall, on at least a quarterly basis, provide the full board a report of liaison activities and the activities of the committee which they're assigned. How about we say on a, as needed, or a biannual basis?
I did the math, and that puts you, well, now that we've reduced some of these, I had us going to meetings, like, an extra meeting, like, every week.
I know.
And sometimes more than that. And if, so that'd be pretty onerous, I think, for some of us, to have to attend every single week. But now that it's, we've eliminated some, that like, that's like four and a half. Some will have four assignments, and some will have five assignments. And.
How about we say on a, on a biannual basis, or twice a year?
On a regular basis?
I like a regular better.
Regular is a better word, yeah.
And you can figure out what regular is.
Meaning, whenever you have an opportunity to make a report.
Bring out five out of town, you'll be regular.
And remember also that we don't, we don't have to attend the meetings. We can keep up with them in other ways. But we do this anyway, when we have our selectmen's report every Monday. We oftentimes will share the things that we've done, the committees that we've gone to, and that's, that's simply all this is asking.
Okay. And then number eight, it shall be the responsibilities of the chair of the board to carry out this policy. Number nine, it shall be the responsibility of the town manager to ensure the chair is able to carry out this policy.
So the chair has to monitor, the town manager has to monitor the chairman, and make sure the chairman's doing his job?
No, I think it's basically to provide the support, because we can't order anything on around what to do, except.
Well, instead of saying "ensure," why not say "support" the chair in carrying out this policy?
That's a great word, "support."
That could be almost anything.
Yeah, okay.
In a positive way.
All right. Do we want to wait to vote this until we block it in the groups of committees?
Well, does anyone have, I got a couple ideas. You want to do them now, or are you trying to, you want everyone to?
Do you want to just submit them to me, and I'll?
Bring them back?
Do you have, bring back suggestions, along with, I mean, obviously, we've got a lot of notes here. Maybe we want to have an updated draft.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we do that?
Do you have my email that you sent, did you send that on to Brent?
Yes, I did. But we wanted, that's another issue that we're gonna talk about, is the assignments, that.
That was the, I also emailed you the suggested, my suggestion of grouping.
Of what?
Of lumping them.
Yeah. You just sent that to me? Did I send?
Yeah, it was a month and a half ago.
Oh. I sent him the emails you sent me.
Okay, great.
Get that?
I'm not sure.
Six weeks ago? Six weeks ago?
It was a while ago, but that's a.
Actually, Doug, would you mind re-sending those to me?
Sure.
Just to make sure I get them.
Yep.
Okay. And so we want to talk about the committee assignments, the next issue. We're gonna bring this back at a future meeting to vote it, vote it. But the next would be it, but the next would be discussed and vote, the liaison assignments. Now, I know that some of us are anxious to get going, and quite candidly, based off of the former assignments, I don't think I was ever reassigned to any of these committees, unless I was just taking the place of Ahmed Mustafa for all of those committees. So, I'd be happy to go through the list with everybody, and let me see, I'm looking for the actual assignments.
But I guess if we're going to do the lumping first, make certain, we do the lumping before we do the assignments.
Yeah, it might be easier to.
That's fine. All right.
Oh, he has it? Oh, okay.
I have one. All right, so we'll, I'll try to, next week's agenda is very full, because we have the Charter Review Committee coming in, we have presentations from the eight petition articles, as well as we're going to be voting the warrant that night, besides any additional business. So, it's a rather lengthy meeting, but if you could probably get us the liaison, we'll take a look at it, the policy, and if it looks like we should be smooth sailing, we'll try to fit it in. Okay? Okay, anyone else have anything else on this?
The last thing I would say is that if you have preferences or ideas, send them my way.
Oh, okay, that's a great idea.
Otherwise, you'll just get whatever comes your way.
Yeah, all right.
Oh, all right.
Okay. Do you want us to rank those preferences?
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea. Second and first, second, third, sort of thing, just to help arrange this. I mean, obviously, the policy says that seniority will take precedence, but it would help if we knew who was interested in what.
Be careful what you wish for, Pat.
No, I.
All right.
I have no preference.
So, we're going to get that to Brent, and Brent will hopefully get it back to us through Thursday timeframe, so they can maybe get it on the agenda if we can fit it in. Okay. Next up, approved minutes of meeting of August the 27th. Anyone have any corrections, errors, omissions?
No, I move approval in the minutes of August 27.
Second. Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it. Next up is approved vote, vote not to release executive session minutes of August the 27th, 2012.
Make a motion to approve and not release in the minutes of August 27.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it. All right. This brings us to summary of actions, and we thank those folks who are out there patiently Next, first one, vote to designate members of the Water Quality Management Committee as special municipal employees. Number two, proclamation, National Suicide Prevention Month. Number three, proclamation, Responsible Dog Ownership Weekend, 9/15, 9/16, 2012. Approved requests for special events, Striper Fest, Marina Park. This is a modification of a permit. Excuse me. Number five, request one-day liquor license. Hold, please. Number six, request for a special event, VIP Feast of Falmouth, Marina Park. This is a change of date to 5:30, 12, 31, 12?
I think it's actually 5:31, 13, isn't it?
Oh, that's correct, Doug. I'm sorry. You're right, but on the thing here. Number eight, approved request for one-day liquor license, Cape Cod Harvest Festival. Hold it, please. Request for a special event, Pop Warner Bike Ride, Shining Sea Bike Path, 9/21. Okay. Number 10, approved request for a one-day liquor license, Barnstable County Agricultural Society, September 29 and September 30. That's two separate licenses. Yeah, one-day license is just FYI. Number 11, that's going to be a hold, incidentally approved, request for a special event, Falmouth Firefighters Local, 139 Philaboot Campaign, MDA. The new date, they had two rainouts, is 10/6/12. The one thing I wanted to ask is... Number nine, the Wounded Warrior Bike Ride. Would you like to speak on behalf of that, or do you want it to pass in the blanket?
I, if they have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
If, at this time, no one held it, that's why I'm asking. Would you like to give a pitch for it? Or do you?
I'd like to invite everybody to come out to the Mon.
Okay.
Stop by somewhere along the side of the Mon. I have all the, I have fun.
All right, well, I'm just going to hold it for you, just to give a quick minute of the pitch. Okay, so we're going to vote on 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 7, and 11. Do I have a motion on that?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. I'm going to kind of do a little blanket here on number five, number eight, and number 10. Make a disclosure that on the whole, we've got all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. These are all one-day liquor licenses. So, do I have a motion?
I have a question on 8, name 11.
Okay, so why don't we go back then? And we'll vote number five first. Do we have a motion?
Some vote.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it. Number eight, go ahead.
Number eight and 10, they're the same location?
Yeah.
Julian, and I asked the office to look into that. No, I'm going to explain it, but maybe he can jump in. It is the same event, two different locations on two different days.
So, just because of big fairgrounds, it's two different locations?
Right.
Perfect. Okay. I move approval of both of them?
Second.
Motion and a second. Again, my disclosure is intact. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes have it. And then, approved request for a special event, Wounded Warrior Bike Ride. Carol, will you come to the lectern and maybe explain to us a little bit? You can't sit back there, no one can hear you.
Do I have to introduce myself, or are you?
No, that would be good. Just tell us a little bit about what they're doing.
The Wounded Warrior Bike Ride is a national event. The Wounded Warriors is a national campaign, and they asked to come to, bring it to Cape Cod this year. Kathy Hill was the mayor of Isla Marada in the Keys, and has done it down there for the last five years, and she lives on the Cape now, and wanted to see it come to the Cape. So, the Wounded Warriors decided that that's what they wanted to do, and they will be bringing 25 wounded warriors, some of them as recently out of Walter Regional, the last few weeks. And they bring them with handicap-accessible, adaptable bikes for them to use. They have hand cranks, pedal bikes, nothing electric. And they're going to be, this is one leg of their trip. They do the Lower Cape, then they're going to do Falmouth, and then they move up to Boston to a Red Sox game, and the next day, they do a 30- and 50-mile ride in Boston, and then they go back to their respective hometowns.
Okay.
So, I have been asked to organize the Falmouth portion of it, and I have gone through with Bike Ways Committee, discussing which intersections needed more attention than others, and I have picked out 12 of them, not all 12 of them are necessary. And I sent out some emails to different community groups, and I got a very quick response from everything from the Falmouth Rotary Club, to the North Falmouth Congregational, the Elks, Boy Scouts, First Citizens Bank, Falmouth Little League, Pop Warner, Cape Cod Five, all asking to take one of the designated crossings, and they would be manning the areas to make sure that the Wounded Warriors can get through safely and not to impede the traffic.
And you wanted some advice to those folks who wanted to cheer them on, not to really ride with them?
Correct. Correct. This is a, the Wounded Warriors are the only ones that will be on bikes. The community is to only stand on the side and to cheer them on.
Great. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Make the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that is next Friday, I believe?
Friday the 21st.
21st. Great. Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We have a town, pardon?
Did we do 11? I don't think we did 11.
Yes, we did.
We did, it was under the blanket.
That's under the blanket.
Okay.
It brings us to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to acknowledge the event this past Saturday, the Olympic recognition event, was a great, great success, and my compliments to all those involved, and it was another one of those events that shows the Falmouth community at its finest, and also pass on great recognition to a past Olympian who had been inadvertently overlooked. So, it was an event that'll also be getting some additional publicity. We look forward to that as well. Also, as a reminder of Chairman Murphy's earlier comments, the fire department's ceremony tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning at Headquarters Station for the September 11 solemn observance, including a, really dedicating a structure involving one of the steel curters from the Twin Towers. We look forward to that important annual observance. Also, as the boards are aware, Friday was the official deadline for the receipt of proposed warrant articles for the upcoming Fall Town Meeting, and we have transmitted to the board a first draft list of anticipated articles. This list will, of course, be further edited. That's a list of all the proposals which had been received, and those will be coming to the board for your final action in some edited form in the very near future. Also, continuing, as the board is aware, you made some final narrative changes to the Conferences of Waste Water Management Plan prior to affirming that it'd be filed with the regulatory review agencies, and as a reminder, if the board would want to bring your early, first draft copies, I know some of you have already, thank you, of the CWMP. We'll insert the revised pages, since it was a spiral-bound document, a little tricky to get those new pages in there, but that would save considerable time and additional printing expense to update those and get the board, those new pages, as well as new revised covers, representing the official document which was filed with the regulatory agencies. And that having been said, we have been contacted. We are in a public review period for that, and we've had a couple agencies respectfully request a two-week, a two-week extension of the review period for that Conferences of Waste Water Management Plan. And speaking with Eric Turkington, Chairman of the Water Quality Management Committee, and others, we're recommending a, the two-week extension be granted, and I would so recommend to the board, which would move the extension of the MEPA decision from October 14 to October 26. I would so recommend to the board, selectmen, for your consideration for concurrence, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't think we can take a vote this evening on that, only because it's not on the agenda.
Okay. We would need to, the dilemma is, we would need to notify the regulatory agencies yet this week, if we're going to allow that. I'm not certain whether it takes a formal vote of the board, or whether I could just advise the board that my intention would be to grant that extension requested by the regulatory agencies. If there is a question, it's protocol. If the board would be agreeable, I'll check with town council on that, and if necessary, we'd put it on next week's agenda. If it's not necessary, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would hope we could, in the interest of time, just allow that two weeks to occur. Otherwise, we'd have to move it into November.
Why don't we go through that process? We need to put it on next week.
Very good. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Individual selectmen reports? The only thing I had to report on was the same thing that Julian did about the Olympic swim meet and presentation to Eric Vent. It was organized by Selectman Flynn, who did an excellent job, former Selectman Clarkson, who's the master of ceremonies. It was great to see a bunch of the youth in our community participate, and after hearing about his accomplishments, one of his former coaches said that he was probably the best long-distance swimmer in the past 50 years in the United States, which is pretty astonishing. He did win the gold medal, and he lost, he got a silver medal, and the person he lost the silver medal to was Michael Phelps, for those folks who know a name that had been in the Olympics quite some time. So, as the young gentleman put it, he's not a very large person, and he was making sure folks realized, you don't have to have stature to be an Olympic gold medalist, that you just have to have commitment and drive. It was a great example in our community to show folks out there that they, too, can accomplish great dreams if they put their mind to it and have the support of the community and their family. Okay? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say one more thing about that, was the swim event in the morning. There were, there was space for 100 children to sign up, to register for the event, and actually, 90, 90 kids did, between the ages of four and 14. And the four-year-olds, there were like 12 waves altogether, you know, groups, and to watch those four-year-olds get in that water and the surf was beginning to, you know, act up a little bit, even that early in the morning. But as cloudy as it was, at 6 o'clock, the sun was shining brightly at 8 o'clock, and the swim event went so well. Eric Vent, the Olympic champion, was there, and he signed their swim caps. He signed anything they put in front of them. And one kid didn't have anything to sign, like a, you know, like a T-shirt or whatever, so he pulled the label out of his swim trunks and asked them to sign the label. He signed everything. And then at the end, he, his mother came with his Olympic medals, the silver and the two golds, so he put those on, and the kids were like, you can't imagine their excitement. They were so excited. And there were so many photographers there, I can't imagine. And they took pictures of all the kids together with Eric and his medals, and their medals. All those that came in first, got a first-place medal, and all the others got a medal with the Olympic torch on it. And it was just great, and you could hear, I could hear them saying at the end, "We want to do this again next year." So, I think, you know, there was really an event for kids, and it turned out to be that. And they had the little parade up Walker Street, and then the kids stayed and sat there through all the ceremonies. So, it was, it was really nice, and I think Eric truly appreciated it. Many thanks to the fire department for the big flag, because that really added to it. Heather had her two boys there in the swim event, so it was, it was really a lot of fun and a lot of work on their part, those people. That was Rob Thiel and Jim Pressick from Falmouth Aquatics, and Patty Gator. They, they just did that whole thing, and I was so impressed with the work that they did, because the kids just loved it.
Chairman.
Yep.
Just to, this is a backtrack a little bit, but we had two proclamations. Should we actually have those read into our minutes? I can't remember if that's what we typically do with proclamations.
We, we do the, if you'd like to pick one of them, and I know that Mrs. Flynn is a dog owner, so she might want to read that one.
I'll start with the suicide one, then, just to make sure we have it as a...
Dixie.
Proclamation, "Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of all deaths in the United States, and the third leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 15 to 24, and whereas the United States, one person completes suicide every 14.2 minutes. And whereas it is estimated that 4.73 million people in the United States are survivors of suicide loss, and whereas suicide is a community problem, and thus, there must be a community response through various initiatives to reduce suicidal behaviors, and whereas Cape Cod's suicide rate is 1.5 times higher than the state of Massachusetts, and whereas the Cape and Islands Suicide Prevention Coalition and the Youth Suicide Prevention Project are dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths through education, awareness, and action, urge that we as a community, and whereas a great many suicides are preventable, therefore, be it resolved that we, Kevin Murphy, Bren Putnam, Mary Pat Flynn, David Braga, and Doug Jones, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do hereby designate September 2012, which overlaps World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10, as National Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Falmouth, Massachusetts."
And this is, whereas the Cape Cod and South Shore Kennel Clubs, member clubs of the American Kennel Club, which was established to foster an interest in purebred dogs and to promote the welfare of all dogs, and whereas through the addition of the AKC Canine Partners Program, the American Kennel Club now speaks for all dogs and promotes responsible dog ownership through programs such as Canine Good Citizen and permanent animal identification such as tattooing and microchipping, and whereas the American Kennel Club established AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Day on September 17, the day of its founding, to promote all aspects of responsible dog ownership, including proper veterinary care, safety around children, obedience training and licensing, which are essential to a happy and healthy bond between the dog and his owner. And whereas Governor Patrick has proclaimed September as Responsible Dog Ownership Month in the Commonwealth, and AKC member and licensed clubs, as well as other animal organizations across the state, host AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Days and have committed to educating the public about responsible dog ownership through local events and demonstrations. And whereas the Cape Cod Kennel Club and the South Shore Kennel Club, with permission from AKC, and in conjunction with AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Days, will sponsor a Responsible Dog Ownership Day booth at the annual Cranberry Cluster Dog Show and Trial with educational displays and materials, and whereas every dog deserves a responsible, educated, and respectful owner. Now, therefore, we, Kevin Murphy, Bren Putnam, Mary Pat Flynn, David Braga, and Doug Jones, as selectmen of the town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim September 15 and 16, 2012, as AKC Responsible Dog Ownership Weekend in Falmouth.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
I have one more thing to say, that the first public hearing of the Cape Cod Commission and the DEP on the Waste Water Management Plan will take place here in Falmouth on October 6 at 6:00 PM in the library. So, that will be the, and I'm on the subcommittee.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Eyes have it, thank you very much.
That's good, they assigned me to it.
If you're a visitor, this is where Surf and Son meet for fun. If you're a resident, this is where you'll find the businesses and the resources necessary to fill all of your needs. If you're a businessperson, this can be your home. Join with other men and women who work together to make this a sustainable economy year-round. Welcome to Falmouth Cape Cod.